That's the big blind, yeah. Alright, we'll start with the big blind. Um, should I shove here? Already questionable. Uh, GTO wizards. X space mark GTO in the chat. Try it for free. You're watching the YouTube. There'll be a link in the description. Get 10% off. Am I referring to something? Yeah, just the coaching session I had of a database review on the 23rd of January. Almost a month ago. Uh, with Troutman, I'll show you. Missing opens all positions, button way too low. That's still the same. It's still only 36, should be 50%. So I haven't improved enough. Uh, this is now minus 15 since then, minus 115, but I mean, there's gotta be variance. Overall three bet good, 9%, big blind too tight. Uh, too tight in EP. Bold flop too high. Big blind two bet needs to be 16%, not as aggressive. Button calling too much. Missing big blind four bets, that is some rolling jams. Alright, let's see. Uh. This hand with nine blinds. I mean, it must be, it's a pretty high blind level. Must be in the money. Let's do ICM. 5% left. Nine bigs in the big blinds. Under gun only has 11, man. Small blind has 7, that's not gonna work, is it? 38 and 20. About 10% left. Same shit, man. The tables. What the fuck, man? How can we be able to find a solution, I think? Could we HRC it? Use under gun one as open instead. Okay, let's do that, so. Uh. Still small blind has, will we do button call? Do button call, let's have a look at this anyway. Good idea. Button call, we're in the big blinds. Yeah, it's a pure call. Job seems fine there, I mean. What are you gonna do? Gotta walk. Should defend this, I think. We know in Chippy V that, uh, you just don't fold. Sorry, you don't fold any suited hands. Uh. Do we start folding suited hands? Make your guess in the chat there while, uh, before I check it. We fold any suited hands in ICM. We'll do the three tables left. So we got Karfajal Doda, MP open. 19 blinds to fold any suited hands, three tables left. Seven deuce is the one you can fold, okay. No mistakes so far, guys. There is a mistake, that's a mistake. Um. Yeah, no matter what, even like we can check two tables left. Same situation. More folds come in, but you don't fold 10 six suited. It's like. 03. Okay, one mistake so far. Shouldn't have defended this. 03. So just till I can defend this. I'm not 100% sure. Is there any way, guys, of finding out if, why can you, why is 5-3 a pure call and then, I mean, they're the same EV? Same EV. Zero. Why are all these zero? Not minus, how is that not minus EV? How is this not minus EV? I ended up scratching of the beard. The YouTube video. Fucking wild, I'm too lazy. Uh, 36 big blinds deep. Do we go raising here? We'll do this in Chippy V. My, my rule is like 30, we start raising 35-ish. Well, uh, when we're super deep, we don't wanna raise, but let's just find out, we're 35, we're 37 here in Chippy V, right? Let's do 35. Versus under the gun is all, you don't really wanna be getting in. Two diamonds, yeah. I bet 1.8. Yeah, there is a lot of raising, so. I mean, it's more with the diamond, though. Jack, club and a spade. Club and spades, yeah. Mix. I think what you, hmm, that's weird. I guess you don't want both on, on board suits when you're raising. Want them to flow with backdoor, right? Check diamonds is out there. It is crazy that. When you've got the diamond and not a club, most raising, I mean, it's not crazy. Interesting. Then when you have the club. And the diamond, it's the least amount of. But, uh, my hand is a mix. Oh yeah, we're supposed to check, uh. Like when does it stop raising? 40. Around the same, looks like. All 37%, what was the 35? All 38%, it was more calling. Have I got this concept wrong? 50, it's gone up. Raising percentage has gone down. Only slightly. Yeah, you see how you do less raising the deeper you are? Need a diamond. Uh, there's still raising, I mean. Yeah, we still need to find the raise top pair versus under the gun. It seems so, um. It's, seems tough to do it. You don't wanna be blowing apart versus the under the gun range. You're locked in, nice one. TBC is locked in. Just put the chat, shouldn't I? Just if I'm gonna make a YouTube video out of this stream. I want you guys' chat. Chat highlights. How about the full chat? Delete, or delete. Folded here. I found this. Okay, thanks for the study stream. Yeah, no bother. You should keep all of this in YouTube video too, behind the scenes footage. Uh, okay. Let's continue here. Check, check, easy value, right? Um, stick size. Other clubs. I think it's. Some clubs, five clubs. Jack 10 off suit, there is some checking. With the diamonds. But, uh, bet 60%. That's the highest EV. See that size, right? Yeah, you're supposed to bet 60% and 90% at the time. Next. One's not supposed to have. Can we force it? Can we force this? I just wanna check if there's any leads with 9-7 off here. 8-5. Oh, we're not supposed to defend this. Oh yeah. Add his leads. Not mandatory. Might become mandatory at 20. We need there never mandatory. It's less of a lead. I guess check raising is just so much better. 20. Zero, that's 7V, yeah. That's pure call. Genius. Nine on the turn. Clubs. Any leads with 9-7? Are you in day two, the overlay edition? No, man. It's not till next, there's another couple of, um. Another couple of flights next week. Pure check. It hurts. Uh, 60% is the overwhelming favorite thing to do. What sorts it's, hearts and diamonds. Will I do it? Oh, I didn't, fuck's sake. Way to get called as well. That's, there's a very mistake. I mean, when you're, alright, we, we did say, we did show that I'm running really bad. Minus 21 big blinds per 100, only minus 10 big blind adjusted, but. When you're running, but the reason I'm not playing today is 'cause. I need to find. Leaks, I need, this is the time to improve your game when you're losing. I mean, you should do it when you're winning as well, but. Um. Yeah, we need to find, so we've found two so far. Uh, I did. I didn't know I was meant to bet there, could be lack of confidence that I didn't. Multiway, it's. Say that's fault. Imagine. Raise, fucking. Bunch of corners. Yeah, look at that, guys. Look at this, king queen off fold. Chippy V, raise. Call, button calls. You're in the big blind with king queen off suit and you mostly fold it. What if he folded? Yeah. The difference between a raise and a call and a raise and a call and another call. It's huge. More TBC has noticed something that I haven't noticed yet. You just shove 100 big blinds facing. Followers are loonies, yeah. I mean. After seeing this solution. Is there anybody in the chat? Let's do a poll. Is anybody shoving 100 big blind after? Seeing this? Uh, now additional votes. Oh, just one minute, guys. 6-5 suited raise, no, I, I like that. They're good for bor- board coverage. Uh. Yeah, you wanna get in there with. That's for board coverage. You know, and you're unblocking some, what's it called, in range and blah, blah, blah. This king queen off, it's insane, isn't it? Alright, nobody's voting. Come on, guys, vote! I'll vote. Come on, big town poker, more TBC. Let me down. Nobody voted, alright. Uh, is anybody gonna fold king queen off? I mean, it's not minus EV. There wouldn't be a sliver of a call if it was minus EV. But look, if you, uh, if you sat light into a game that you're uncomfortable in. Um. You know, the, like, 5:30 or something and you don't play much at that level. And it goes raise, call, uh. Call. There's no reason why you shouldn't fold ace queen off, or a king queen off, so. I don't like the way it doesn't show, like, once it's a fold, it's a fold. I mean, it doesn't show, like, how. What EV, like, this is break even, 'cause you can call. And it shows the same EV as king do soft, that's kinda stupid. But do buy the product. I mean, I wouldn't, but I'd assume I'd get a call worse, yeah, the big 3:30. Or PKO, yeah. Anyway, no fun this. I think, uh, that's an obvious fold. Very big. Be mistakes. It's 2.5, though. We force this. How do you, uh? How do you use the AI without, like, being prompted? Just do it the way I know. Solution for this spot, then it should come up. Wanna use AI? No. More TBC, how'd you, can I change this to 2.5 and check the AI? HRC would just be. Right, so open under gun, black the small blind. I think this one is gonna be close. Uh, 35 affected. It's not close at all. Don't fold any ace. Yeah, so the bigger stack depth you start folding. But ace eight off is still in there in Chippy V. It's not a mistake. It's not a mistake. Ooh! Nice double. That was yesterday. Hello, what's the topic? Uh, big blind. Just big blind. Um... I lost 115 big blinds per hundred in the, in the last month. So just trying to find, uh, mistakes. 8,000 hands. So obviously it's something. So whatever. Uh, this is probably in the money, right? Is there any way you can check? In the money or not? Does anyone know? I mean, that blind level is surely in the money. Although I don't really cash on iPoker, so maybe not. That's anywhere. Check all of them. Do we have 10 or nine? 10. Call in chip EV. Here above the second. In the money? Only big blind has 10. Why the button have more though? What did I do? Button has 19, this one. Oh, it's just, oh, he has 19, yeah. That's called. Okay. Chip EV, 40. Chip EV. Yes. In clubs, 10 hearts, 3. I'm feeling I shouldn't, uh, fold this hand. Yeah, it's, clubs are like, whatever. Raising is minus EV. Call is break even. And... Yeah, but it doesn't look like, um... Doesn't look like chip EV, does it? It's iPoker again. No, it's not all i- oh my god, it's all iPoker, guys. That's like a big blind per hundred is like that. Anyway, we'll keep going. It's all on Paddy Power. He's like when you shave off in an iPoker game. But it's mad to see, like, do you know, on stream I complain about how bad I run in iPoker. It's mad to see, like, uh, if we go back here. That I actually genuinely run so bad. Minus 21 big blinds per hundred and then minus 10 all in adjusted. Like, that gap is insane. What's the yellow line here? Funny. It's only on cash you can see your, like, me and stuff. Not a 5, 3 offs. I mean, you just have, you just can't fold here. And then the river you can. Raise turn, let's say. Oh my god. That was, uh... That's just, I wasn't concentrating. I must have been in a few other big hands on other tables. I'm just fucking clicking buttons here. I mean, this is this is an obvious error and, uh, blunder and whatever you want to call it. So like, we don't need to study it. I mean, it's very obvious sessions. Raise the turn. Probably. You can check that. I assume we raise the turn and obviously checking the river is absolutely insane. Yeah, at 100 blinds, you want to be, have, be more linear, have all the suit stuff that plays by the post flop. Just a quick, uh... It's a quick little lesson on blind versus blind, uh, eye swing. Uh, and then when you get down to like 30 blinds, you're gonna be using blockers more. See all the offsuit stuff and you don't want the raise-folder stuff. That's the point. These are raise calls. Raise, call, shove, 30, 30 big blinds, right? Then it kind of halfway is kind of a bit of everything. Be a lot of betting, king sixes mix. Go for the checkers, we're obviously not concentrating. He bets one. And it's not a pure raise. Uh, we have a club in our hands, 50/50. And obviously we're not gonna check. Gonna check. After he checks, guess what? King six never checks. When it goes raise call, do you think any suited stuff comes out? Not, not being too suited, but check two suited comes out. People don't realize, I mean, regs and pros realize, obviously. Uh, but they didn't like a few years ago. That is a huge, this before three ways service came out. There's a huge difference between in the open and it's folded around to you and your heads up. And there being an open and a call. Now, even further back in the day, people used to think that the more callers that are in the, you know, the more people that are in the pot, the more you're supposed to call because you're getting the odds or whatever. But, uh, yeah, it's just, uh, future implied odds go down. When you call here, like, you're really dominated by the, the calling range. It's just harder to play out a position against two players than it is one. The pot's gonna be bigger and blah, blah, blah. Check that, so it's fine. Little bit of raising. Just, there's, there's a lot of these things that I know. Uh, but I'm just going back over them, refreshing my mind. Some of you guys might not know. Let's go to 30. King seven off shove here. How about that? These two, these two, Tratman was, um, telling me where the power shoves are musts. They're 100% shove, 30 big blinds. Let's do raise cutoff. Goes to king eight, queen eight. Can somebody in the chat tell me why that is? No? How about everyone else? I bet you if I said I'd send you $10 on stars if you can answer this correctly. It'd be like fucking 10 answers in chat. It's to do with the cutoff, uh, opening range, right? So the cutoff doesn't open off suit 8x. And the button doesn't open off suit 7 and 6x. Like, these ones down here. You look at the cutoff opening range. Pretty much all the 8x stuff is out. Right? Then look at the button opening range. All in. Seven, oh, seven stuff is out. And that's the reason. Yeah, yeah, you fold up better hands, obviously. But why is it specifically using, uh, king eight? Why does it change from king seven and king six suited versus button to king eight and queen eight suited versus cutoff? That's the reason. Could raise the flop here. It's probably, it's not a pure raise, but we're on the right team. It's like ace, 3, 4, something. Or new rainbow. Yeah, unblocking the lower end of the range here. Exactly. Actually, mostly supposed to, right? I mean, I say mostly. Oh, that's fine. Next. This is super deep, sure. I mean, I'm not gonna check that stuff. No, yeah, I'm just not sure these days, man. Let's check. Two tables out, ICM. It's comes out versus under gun, but that's under gun with 10 blinds. Ah, where were shortest here? On raise. Hi Trap Queen Man. Hi Daniel T. Early stream today. I stream this time every single Monday, my friend. Every single Monday. Usually playing. Now we're checking the old big blinds on iPoker. Finding mistakes. We found four so far. This is a sexy, uh... Sexy, sexy, sexy one to raise at 20. That's exactly the one. Raise there. Raise not all in. What? Raise not all in at 20 big blinds? Yes, sir. Raise the five big blinds. I would raise the six. I'm raising the six, it's fine, or 6.5. I don't like this raise to five from the big blind. Maybe from the small blind where you're not as polar? Ryan's gambling says morning. This was just full flap, eh? Let's see the call range here in ICM. How deep are we? Twenty. Big blinds of twentyish. Small blind covering. It's in there. I have a feeling this is gonna be a call, the solver. I thought about shoving here, I remember the hands. King six two. Uh, I would have called him station, G2 Wizard needs to give you new banners, unless it's not the best tool in twenty twenty four, like it was in twenty twenty two. Oh, yeah. I get new banner up. Um. Let's snooze this ads actually. So, we're looking for five, six off. It's supposed to be better third, hundred percent of the time, pretty much. A bit small, for fuck's sake. One big blind. He raises. Yeah, hundred percent call. I mean. Yeah, it's a mistake, I guess. In game though, it just felt, just felt so valuey. He did it like he's got sevens, eights, nines, tens, jacks. Should have bet a third. It's not gonna be a mistake, is it with king? Get a box, can't be a mistake, that can't be a mistake. Uh, defending this, ooh, leady. One lead. Enough, I just, goja. Decade off barely makes it in there. Right, so as soon as you go ICM, even seventy five percent left. Forty. Fifty percent left. Comes out. Oh, that's a mistake, we're definitely around that area. The stacked up, I think. Yeah, eight hundred twenty seven K definitely. He just fucking bombs in half his stack like an absolute legend of the game. Is the bounty we have to call? Thank god. It's fine. Bounty, have to call. Get there, baby. All in. Oh, this is the home game, I remember, this is an emotional fish. Uh, twenty blind is surely a shove, right? It's chippy V. V V twenty B. Easy. It's called? Easy. Yeah, pure call. They're nuts. I just called. Trying to induce. Definitely should have, although at this SBR actually it's fine, and at deeper stacked ups. Maybe not. He's gonna try and put pressure on me, like if he missed his, his, if it came like a deuce here, he's obviously just fucking launching in. That's a call. It's a fold. That's me. Fault, fault. Nine off. We start raising at fifty, what you think? What do you think? Right, we're on odds, let's see. Hey. What's he doing? Don't tell me I've missed a study session. Uh, no, you haven't. You have missed half the study session, and I'm gonna put this on YouTube. What was I doing, man? Yeah, it's nine off. Pure call. That's a shitflop. We're doing big blind, I lost. Over eight thousand hands, my big blind win rate is minus one hundred and fifteen, and it should be minus twenty six, so we're trying to see if it's variance or stakes. Uh, sixteen bigs. Pure call. Mistake. I win though, I mean, that didn't contribute to my minus one hundred and fifteen win rate. Don't fold. Anyway, can't really. Not this. I mean. Let me see. Fourteen blinds. Cut off. And. Into the fold. Take it. Old. Oh, limps though. This. Rip it down his neck. Thirty seven big blinds, rip it down his neck, what you think? Yeah, baby. That's a, that's a defend. That's a defend. No jack. Especially, oh, it's not. Oh, look. We could defend this stuff though, on eye poker. After games, queen five though. Any squeezes here? Eye blind's effective, probably not. And then just fold. Big bet. My six king. I mean, it's not gonna be a fold, is it? A bit large, a bit like this. I mean, it's not worth much, if you look at the E V. Fold is zero. Call is worth zero point zero nine E V, but yeah, it is still a mistake. A mistake. Three five versus cutoff. Little bit of folding coming in, probably should have defended, I mean, it's not a huge mistake. Uh, this is a fold. And it goes raise call, has to be tighter. Uh. We checked that earlier, what about four, seven off? Uh, fifty. False. Bad man, that's a call. Smash it in, boy. That's a that's a bad mistake. I mean, that's definitely not something I did consciously. Eight fold versus that bet size. Yeah, well, apparently you're not supposed to. Have you been, bro? No, it's great. Uh, yeah, been losing. Uh, we got the bankroll challenge up to fifteen K. It's back down to ten now. Don't feel like playing today, so we're just doing some study. I checked my big blind stats since May last year and I'm at minus twenty-four point nine. That's very good. That does mean you're the greatest big blind player ever. It does. Means you're running good though. If your big blind per hundred is better than your all-in, adjust the big blind per hundred means you're running good. Should we squeeze? Uh, hijack button. Most please. Hmm. I don't recall here. But there's no three-way on G2 Wizard yet, so we can't really check this. This will be a fold versus button cutoff. I mean, this is gonna be an ICM as well when there's all those players missing. We already checked this. Jack do suited, folding, queen do suited calling. I mean, sixteen big blinds could be different as well. It's probably not chip EV as well. Go ICM. Seventy percent there. Seventeen bigs. Hijack and UTG. Oh. All, all suited up. What's the solution? Hijack to, I, I think it was more big blinds maybe. But at sixteen, we just wanna recall. So another mistake. And look at that. What a mistake. That call. It's too big. You can't be betting that size. Look at the Check this, right? Call. What about ICM? Hold. Stacktop's probably ICM. We shove versus lowjack. Lowjack, that. Oh, what a genius, man. Exactly four as we shove. We don't shove any of the other small pairs. Probably defend this. No, not three-way. Uh, versus his stack, I don't know. Uh, where is it? Here. Also in the downswing at the moment. That's not easy, man. It's not easy. Remember we checked, um, this will be chip EV at the stacked up. We checked when it goes raise call, call. Anyone missed it? Uh, you have to be way tighter than raise call. Raise. Call, call. Six, seven off is okay to call though. Look at this, fold and king queen off. That was a pure fold in the last time we checked, wasn't it? Ace jack off, fold. Huh? Ace ten off, pure fold. Connor, have you filtered to see how you are losing in big blind? Is it from single raise pots, multi-way, certain stack depths, three-bet pots? And I'm just going through every big blind I played on Paddy Power at the moment. How do you do that? How do you filter to see exactly how you're losing? I mean, nobody has a, nobody has a positive win ratio from the big blind anyway. We're just losing like four X the amount you're supposed to lose. Oh yes, the old raising with the suited connectors. Start doing this at this, at the deeper stacked ups and your win rate will improve hugely. You don't do this. There you start. Let me just prove. You. Six, seven suited, eight, six suited, seven, eight suited. Then versus button. It's almost pure. I bet you, there's forty-five people in the chat right now, and I bet you at least half of you aren't three betting this versus button. Probably have to go through them one by one with filters. Not sure for PT, but in HM you can filter by action face and stack size of cards. Uh, it's only eight thousand hands. I mean, altogether. So it's from the big blind that's gonna be like yes, a thousand hands. We're going through a thousand hands. We're here anyway. We just wanna get the gist. Eight seven was underneath, yeah. So we're a quarter of the way through. Stop a straight, raise, seems good. Better turn. Check river? I don't know. Maybe check river here, right? Three five big blinds, chip EV. First cutoff. Check nine off. You can raise it a little bit. Call, we flop straight, a queen high straight, isn't it? In ten eight two clubs. In ten. Check. Bet's twenty percent. Jack nine off is surely a pure raise. Almost. Jack of diamonds, nine of hearts is actually the one where we can call a lot. Raise. All, turns the king of clubs. Do we slow down without a club? No. Pure check with a club. With the flush. That's check nine suited, that's check. Uh, with the nine clubs, we start checking a lot. Jack clubs, we keep going. We keep going. What's my bet? Third. Is that the right bet size? EVs are all the same, let's check. Bird strategy. Yep, third. I'm not that bad at poker, lads. I don't wanna check the river here. I never remember in game that I was thinking about it. It was a six of diamonds. No, fair shove. Shove. It seems sexy to check though, right? Because what's his floats here? One club. Maybe ace of clubs, ten, ace of clubs, jack. I mean, that beats me on the turn. Ace of clubs, eight. Might bluff the river if I check. When I two big stacks last. A hundred big blinds. Big blind might skew a lot. For accurate daddy, you need bigger sample. Yeah, I know, but yeah, I mean, if you, let's just have, I'll just show you, um, stairs, for example. Three. July twenty twenty-three. It was a big sample. That HR sees. Was it under the gun? Oh, there's no calls. Big blind minus twenty-one. That's pretty awesome, isn't it? Big blind too high. Should be at least minus twenty-six. It's probably minus thirteen. What sample did he see on? I poker since that day. It's forty-five. The three size is larger. One flat even. Yeah, I think, I think I have an alias. I think oh, no, I, I had an alias and then I, um, I wanted to separate them for some reason. I wanted to see I wanted to see if it was in my head or if it was true that I just run bad on iPoker. It's obviously true. The, the gap is big there. Big here as well. Though I run good in the small blind. Look at the size of the gap there, like no gap in the E big gap. EP, I run better. Let's continue. Is that in the way? That's gonna be fold. Remember at the very low stack depths, any suited hand, even, even when it goes raise call. No, I know, you can have the two sizings. The, the problem, what I did was, um, I didn't have any flats, so it, it gave me only, um, three bets. We'll check now. Remember the hands? Remember the hand, it's queen 7 off is a call versus min raise, and we wanna find out, uh, if it's called versus 2.5. Not gonna play much poker this week, so I'm gonna probably, my streams, like, I'm, I'm playing the home game tomorrow evening. I might do a I might do a study, study stream leading into the home game and then do like a card cover. No delay stream for the home game tomorrow and maybe get a guest on. And then Wednesday I'll do a study stream as well. Pretty, you know, similar to this one. Uh, we'll go through button maybe. Yeah, we'll do another half an hour and then... Yeah. That's not a foul. Not a mistake. And fold last. I mean, this could be a satellite. 8, 9, the ace 9 off. I don't think so. Not the home game, is it? The only satellite I'd play on. Okay. What do limp calls, what's he have? Uh... Where's this? Missing big blind 4 bets. Cut off, but... I mean, I doubt I'm missing that. 9. Big blind, the board smashes the big blind. Uh, raise call. It's any suited hand, isn't it? We checked a while ago. If it's chippy V, but I see him. Yeah, that's the one. Is... Yeah, you just don't fold anything in hand. Not much you fold. It's ace 6 off. Even with 10% of the field left. 5%, eh? The final 2 tables. Fair enough. Not a mistake. That's definitely a defend, I'm missing some defense. That's... Only need to laugh is they studied the fact that you're supposed to fold. All in that. Overfold, yeah, supposed to. So that how compared to like, oh, I'm gonna go on here. Go ace 9 off, like... You have to make sure to get the positions right when you're making these decisions. Just think more about the ranges in game. 4x, nice fucking open, bro. Probably won't make a mistake places. 6 and 9, yes. Ah, yai 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 yai! This is a mistake. Wow. At 25 blinds, 8, 9 suited is a pure 3 bet, not all in. What if we do, and then he's all in? We pure call it off? Is anybody in the entire plan gonna do that? It's too scary, yeah? Fuck that shit. Imagine a bunch of people that haven't seen this. Imagine doing this in like a live game. 3bet 8, 9 suited, he shoves his 25 blinds in, you just call it off. He'll be looking at you like... Don't know about that, sir. As played though. Um... Any calls? 0 calls? 8, 7 suited work? 8, 7 suited work, it's okay. Then we have 8, 7 suited. On 6, 3, 10. The hearts. Means... Suited call seems fine. 3 hearts. Remembered one. Leading. Especially with the hearts. Can't miss the lead with the hearts. Again, scary prospect, cuz you, you lead. Uh, button shoves. Oh, you fold. I wanna fold. But, uh, anyway, it goes check. Checks. Versus 6 of clubs. I think I know why I didn't, uh... Oh, you can just, you can just check. The double pair boards, man. There's, especially when the flush draw misses and stuff, they just always call. I don't mind this, and the solver doesn't mind it, so... I thought that was a huge blunder, but it's actually not. He's never folded that. All in. I know what's all in. Check. Mistake. We're up to about 10 now, aren't we? That's just in there so they can identify the box. That's, that's, yeah! Uh, what do you think of leading turn check raise and flop? I like the, I mean, the solver likes the turn lead, right? It's like a pure lead. Uh, we, I think we do have enough 3x. Uh, especially when your bets really small in the flop, so yeah. Possibly. Should have led, I would have pure led for what it's worth on the other if the other thing paired, if the 6 paired. Would have led. But the problem again with leading is you lead, he shoves, and then you're just you have to fold this equity or you have to call with 9 high, it's just this kinda shit, but if the 6 paired uh, that we'd have a lot more 6x in our range and we don't mind folding if he shoves. Um, because we only have a gut shot, instead of a gut shot in the first round. So in game, I prefer to lead, I prefer the um... Prefer to check, because our opponent's not really meant to shove, but a lot of people do. Um... It's the right hand, yeah? Should be 25, isn't it? Yes. Check raise, flop with flusher. Little bit with the backdoor. 3 hearts. Lead. He's got zero all ins, right? But as soon as we start, as soon as we think in game... Do people have zero all ins here? I really don't think so. So solver likes leading because the, the counter strategy has no all ins, but our human friends, our human opponents do have all ins, which makes, uh, leading a combo draw really bad. As soon as that goes to like, if we could force this to... To have all ins. See, now we don't wanna lead with the 7, 8 hearts. That's just giving the button the option to shove. Did you check, um, turn against the big sizing there? I think so, yeah. More TBC says, just try to filter now, pre-flop all ins and a mage. He's kinda trying to make us all simple. What, what's that in reference to? Oh, right. Made a big difference in numbers, filter out the big blind all in. But I kinda wanna go through everything. TBSK says, do you know how short the button is? If button bets big, they nearly always call off with ace high. Um... But he also, GBSK, I disagree, he also like bets big with, you know, king, jack of clubs, king, jack, 1 heart or 1 diamond. We bet like 5 big blinds here on the turn. You don't think he has like air? There's definitely bet folds, uh... But let's look at what he's meant to bet. After we check. Right? Jack 9 of spades. He shove 9 high and get jack high to fold, seems good. Queen, jack. Diamonds and hearts. I don't know why he doesn't have the other combos, probably something to do with the flop strategy, king, jack. Little bit of spades, little bit of clubs. TBC bears more air. Yeah, look at this 1 this offsuit stuff. King 8 off. Ace 4 off. Does he really call with ace 4 off when we check off, check shove turn? You think he's calling with ace high? TBSK seems to think so, but obviously he calls with his flush draws and his exact hand, but like, there's enough. We beat that, but you have to check fold river, if he has to bluff, you have to check fold river. 10 5 is the sheet. Jack 8 suited. No flush draw, it's supposed to be a pure bet. 5 suited, I mean, there's well enough hands that are ahead of our 9 high here that we can fold out. Filtering out all in pre-flop makes my big blind numbers much worse. Yeah, that means you're running good, yeah? Yeah, leading the 6, also it doesn't, because the 6 of hearts is already out there, it doesn't bring the flush draw. Uh, you can make the 10 of har, the 10 of hearts. the six a diamond, then put a six on the turn and see. Let's do that. Make the ten the hearts. Six of diamonds. Way more leading. Fifty percent. With the hearts. Almost purely. But again, we have to give the button all ins. Yeah, the six is just way better, isn't it? There is less leading when we give the button all ins. Yeah. Shout out to the B B Z bundle. Okay. Wanna get yourself a B B Z bundle, click that link. They are cheap. They're well worth it. By the way, if you don't have this tool, G T O Wizards, you can try it for free. Use my link and you get 10% off when you do decide to buy it, which you will once you've tried it for free. And hopefully after watching this, if you're watching on YouTube, it's in the description as well. Uh, how long are we on? Two hours? Uh, right, let's, let's do a few more hands. I don't think the squeezing here, we can, I just wanna kinda check even stuff, I know, maybe sixty. One, uh, oh, what? Four handed. Enough small blind. There's a little bit. If it's earlier. There's more. Hand fold, even the big size here. Going to nuts. And ace high is too high up to stuff. I decided to do it anyway. Size that. Have to do heads up. Yo, Ray John. If you want to see what sort of plots you're getting, hit the worst in big blind. Filter for big blind is more filters, hand details, player position, pre-flop, exactly age. In both my reports, open up a new report, select player report, and highlight based on action pre-flop. It'll show you where you win or lose versus limper, two limpers, et cetera. Alright, I'll try that after the sand. Check, he bets large. Still not folding a bit. It's struggling. So, maybe you do bluff it, so... It's the diamonds turn. Maybe we don't get here with enough air. And ace high becomes bluff. Da 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 da. Yeah. Size is fine as well. Well played. Oh yeah, we said we'd do this. We said. More filters. Yeah, there's a big blind. Hand detail. Player position. Pre-flop. Exactly age. My reports. What do I do then, Wayne? Based on action pre-flop. Where, where? 3,500 all in adjusted. Oh wait, what? No. Minus forty-two. Okay. The one that's been a limper, I've won loads. Two limpers have lost loads. One raiser have won. One raise plus caller loss. Three reco lost loads, four reco lost loads. What, I just click into, click into the hands, no? Oh, you can't like go through the hands? I didn't all in adjusted in the search feature under there. Oh, here. I'm well in the race box. How do I lose any chips if all players fold? Now what do I do, like? It's nickel load. My high low. Oh my god, look at this. This year on iPoker, big blind per hundred minus 4.23. All in adjusted big blind, one big blind per hundred. Now, if that doesn't prove I run bad on iPoker, nothing. Air sample pans. Um, getting hungry, I wanna edit this as well for YouTube, so tomorrow, I think we'll continue with, no, we'll, we'll move on to the button. I mean, we've done a lot in the big blind today. Is 2.5. Bank call. First 2.5 is out. Needs to be run further. Alright, ciao.